Good morning. It is Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, and I'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Their motion to adopt today's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Now's the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If anyone in the public meeting room would like to make public comment, please come forward to the table in front of us. Or if you're online, please raise your hand on Zoom. And seeing no rush to the front there, we will close public comment number one. We'll move on. We've got a three proclamations to do this morning. The first one we're going to read is consideration of proclamation recognizing September 2024 as National Suicide Awareness Month. Supervisor Basil, would you start us off, please?
Sure. Whereas September is known globally as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, the goal is to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide to help de-stigmatize the conversation and help connect people with the appropriate support services. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, AFSP, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34 in the U.S.
And whereas more than 48,000 people died by suicide across the United States each year with the average of 132 suicides completed daily. And whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas Story County publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement.
And whereas our local mental health experts serve on the front lines of a war that many still refuse to discuss, a stigma regarding suicide and mental health issues is far too prevalent. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in Story County, and encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of mental health. I move the proclamation.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Been approved. We'd want to do the picture after the other two. Okay. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month. I'll start that off. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a month-long celebration of Hispanic and Latino history and culture, and it's important because it provides an opportunity to celebrate the integral part of the Hispanic-Latino community has had in growing and strengthening our democracy. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month provides an additional opportunity to explore the incredible impact Latinas and Latinos have had on the United States, Iowa, and Story County for generations. And whereas the Latino presence in America spans centuries, predating Spain's colonization of what is now part of the United States, and they have been an integral part of shaping our nation since the Revolutionary War.
And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month began as a week-long celebration in 1968 under President Johnson, and was expanded to a month by President Reagan 20 years later in 1988. The month-long celebration provides more time to properly recognize the significant contributions Hispanic and Latino Americans have made in the United States. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month does not cover one single month, but instead begins in the middle of September and ends in the middle of October. The timeframe of this month is significant because many Central American countries celebrate their independence days within those dates, beginning on September 15th with Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. By aligning with these independence dates, Hispanic Heritage Month honors the resilience and determination of the Hispanic community.
And whereas we will continue to advocate for Hispanics, Latinos as representation matters. Latinos and Latinas continue to shape our nation as business owners, activists, artists, public servants, and more. From serving in the U.S. military to being champions in the fight for civil rights, Latinas and Latinos remain strong leaders and change makers. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage citizens to inspire equity, create alliances, celebrate diversity, and establish safe environments in our schools and communities throughout the county. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Proclamation is adopted. Now we have a third proclamation. This is for recognizing National Voter Registration Month, September 2023, or and National Voter Registration Day as being September 17, 2024.
Whereas registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote. And whereas while Iowa consistently maintains a high rate of voter registration, there are eligible citizens who are not currently registered to vote. And whereas voter registration is maintained at the county level, and anyone moving into Story County is a new registrant regardless of previous voter registration status. And whereas Story County has a mobile population and registered voters who change residence within the county need to update their registration by completing a voter registration form in order to know their correct polling location.
And whereas Story County, as the home to Iowa State University, recognizes that many younger citizens participate in elections for the first time in Story County and encourages all who are eligible to register to vote. And whereas Iowa's voter registration process is readily available with online voter registration, election day registration, and applications available throughout government agencies across the state. And whereas Story County provides its eligible residents with a postage-paid voter registration form available on the county's website.
And whereas the need for public information and education regarding voter registration is crucial as Iowa voters prepare to take part in the upcoming 2024 general election on November 5th. And whereas we encourage all interested citizens and all appropriate media outlets and civic organizations to participate in this nonpartisan voter registration awareness campaign to encourage the maximum participation of qualified voters in Iowa. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Voter Registration Month and Tuesday, September 17, 2024, as National Voter Registration Day. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. The proclamation is adopted. You wanted to do some pictures at this time or at the end of the meet at the?
No.
Okay. Yep, we'll start with the suicide prevention.
I don't know that we have anyone for Hispanic awareness, but we do have for voter registration. No.
I'll get it fixed. I'll probably need some cling copies.
Yeah, just the very top.
Yeah, I feel like, oh, I left the 20.
Yes, it's at the very top.
Thank you. I'll get that fixed.
Yep.
All right, I got eight points. So, I'm at. Okay, it looks like we are on to agency reports, and the first one we have is the City of Ames American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA annual report. Good morning, Keith.
Morning.
Morning.
Thank you for having me, and I'll start off with thanks so much for the generous contribution of $500,000 to the, our project. It's a very helpful and overall $30 million roughly project that we're doing. I thought the best way to go through or give you an update is to show you some pictures of the, of the project. So we'll kind of go through with it. So just with the building design, so the location of this, we did purchase the land from the Iowa Department of Transportation. That was in January of 2023. And it is right north of the DOT on Lincoln Way between Elm and Oak Street. So it's a, just a not quite four acres with it. So, so with this, this is a look from the south looking north is the Fitch Family Indoor Aquatic Center. The next view that, that we have is kind of looking to the, to the northeast. And you kind of get a better idea of everything. So the higher area is the nadatorium. So when people come by, we'll have that combination. There is some, some windows there to be able to see in at all times with it. The next view is kind of looking to the north, or to the northeast. And, and that also shows, in this picture, you see the slide. It does start in the building, comes out of the building, goes back in. And on the west side of the facility, we're doing all the stormwater management on site. So we do have a couple of basins that, that will help with, with contain that stormwater. The next one, this is looking to the, to the southwest. And one of the things I'll point out in, in this one is where you see the lighter color pavers or those pavement. Those are pavers permeable, and we are doing some underground stormwater management in those areas as, as well. And then the last, the shot is looking to the south. This is the, the main entrance with it. I will mention before we go in a little further, so one of the things, if anybody's been following, you know, there has been concern about contamination on, on this site from a coal gas plant that was to the, to the north. There also was a filling station in the northeast corner. Thus far, every hole that we have dug, we have not seen any contamination, which is, which has been really good. But we did put a lot of things in place in the design, vapor barrier underneath the building and so on, to really try to prevent that contamination from getting into the building. So the next slide just shows the, the floor plan. And, and when we weren't sure we were going to have enough money, so if you see that line on the right, we did have a base bid, which was really the aquatics portions, locker rooms and so on. And then we did an alternate bid with multipurpose space, some additional restrooms, and a walking area. So when bids came in in January, and we have, we're using a construction manager, so we actually had 14 different bids, bid packages that went out. And, and the city holds those contracts with all 14 of those, those contractors. But bids came in actually three and a half million less than what our engineer's estimate was, which allowed us to be able to do the, the add alternate. So if we go in, when you walk into the building, you will see the next slide. So you'll see the, the main entry area, control desk. You'll be able to, to see the glass area right there is into the, to the pool. The next slide, this is looking out at the main entrance. We will be doing a donor wall, which is Story County will be up there on that donor wall as well. Just to the left of this check-in desk is a room we're calling the admin suite, and that's the next slide. Just a, a small space will be used for, we'll have the table in there. People will be able to work. If I ever go to that facility, I'll be able to, to go into that space, do some work, have meetings and so on as, as well. We do with the next slide is the classroom and party room. These are attached to the, to the pool areas. And with, with this is, there is a divider, so we can actually have two birthday parties going on at the same time. But yet it is designed as a wet classroom, so if we're doing certification classes for lifeguards and so on, we can do in-water stuff, out-water stuff, and, and that will work out really well. One of the things with the next slide, and you know, really focused in the design to make sure that this was inclusive, ADA compliant and so on. About two years ago, we did an ADA audit of all of our facilities and our parks. And, and one of the things that during that audit, we had public input and we received some feedback from individuals with disabilities. We have been doing what we call universal restrooms in, in the new park restrooms. But in here, what we did is, is those top four changing rooms could be families. We have smaller changing tables in there. But one of the feedback that we got was to have adjustable adult changing tables. So the two ones at the, at the bottom actually are motorized changing tables. And there's a lot of adult individuals with, with disabilities that, that need assistance. So this will really help those, those caregivers. So with the, the next slide, that's just that universal change area. There will be automatic door openers for people to, to get into, to that area. And it'll go into the, into the, to the nadatorium. The next slide just shows you one of the, one of the change rooms with that adjustable change table. Now, we also in the next slide, we do have a men's and a women's locker room as well. So people do have options on, on what, what locker room they want to use. The next slide just shows you kind of an idea of, of what, what it is. But one of the things in the next slide that we have is the showers in the men's and women's locker room still are private. So they're individual showers. So even if you are using one of those, you know, it's not the gang shower that probably a lot of us grew up in with, with high schools and so on. So there is some additional privacy. We go to the next slide, we get into the, to the nadatorium. And there are three basins in this one. That prominent picture is a zero-depth entry with a play structure. And then there is a current channel for water walking there. The next slide, you know, gives you a little bit more. We have a six-lane 25-yard lap pool. Deepest area is nine feet deep. And then the last basin that we have will be a wellness pool. Now, we do have a wall around the wellness pool, and that is because that temperature of that basin is going to be about 90 degrees, the water. The zero-depth entry pool will probably be about 86 to 87. And then the lap pool will be roughly about 83 to 84. So that was one of the things, again, through feedback, we got is really a variety of, of water temperatures, but a lot of the warm water activities. Go to the next slide. This goes back to kind of that entry lobby area, and what you see here is a walking area. Be a little bit more of a cushion surface that people will be able to walk on. And then that goes around those multipurpose space rooms. And we go to the next slide. This is a, a view of the multipurpose. Again, that's a cushion floor in there. We also do have the possibility of putting a divider down in that room as well, so we can have two activities going on at the same time. Also in this room, we do have, from a technology standpoint, we still do have individuals that attend some of our classes virtually. So, so we do have that capability to do this. And then in the next slide, you can see that it could also be set up for meetings or, or other activities as well. So as far as the project timeline, which is the next slide, already talked a little bit about some of those first ones. We did have, and some of you attended, the groundbreaking in April. We did start construction. And estimated completion date is November of '25 at, at this time. So just to give you an idea of what the site looked like, the next slide that we have. So again, this is where St. Cecilia School, and there used to be a church on there, and you can see the building in the kind of the upper right corner as well. So that's what it looked like before we got started with demolition. The next slide, you know, shows some of the demolition of the, of the school going on. And then some more demolition. And then this shows where those trailers are in the, in the left side of the picture. That's the northeast corner of the, the site. That is where the contamination is that we have found. But, so that is going to be the last thing that we will be doing from a construction standpoint. And basically, when we get to that time, we'll just be taking the parking lot off and then putting new parking on. So we're really not doing any digging or anything along those lines. But you can see the, where we did a lot of the fill. And then the next slide, you can see some of the, the footings and the foundations going in. And, and this gives you a little bit more. So on the, on the lower right part of it, that's actually going to be the, the surge tanks, you know, for the, the pool. I won't go into what surge tanks are and how those all work, but, but you can see some of the, again, the footings and the foundations going in around that. And I believe that is the last slide. So, so again, I want to thank, you know, the, the Board of Supervisors for, you know, committed to, to helping with this project. And for people that are watching, if you don't know, one of the, the things that we have done is we do have an agreement with Story County that all Story County residents will be able to use this facility and pay the, the same cost as Ames residents, which is something that, you know, we typically have not done. But we, we do see obviously the benefit with that, and that's for a 10-year term. And, and hopefully that goes really well, and we see a lot of people from Story County utilizing this, this facility. So with that, I would entertain any questions, if anybody has any.
Well, first, I am so glad this site worked out because I think it is really the best site for this, you know, facility in terms of having people from other parts of Story County access. At the first site was way almost in DeBoon County. You've had a lot of, a lot of travails on this one, but you've, you've managed it successfully, and I want to congratulate you on doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm also glad that you were, you were able to reach the agreement that Story County residents would be able to use the, use the aquatic center for the same rate as the Ames residents, that period we talked about. I don't know that I have any questions. I'm just very glad to see that this is coming to, is coming to fruition. So thank you for all the work on it.
Yeah, so, so are we, and, and we get a lot of comments. I get a lot of comments from, from people that they can't wait until it, until it's open. Especially we, at Furman Aquatic Center, we have a lot of water walkers, a lot of lap swimmers, a lot of tots, you know, playing, just a lot of people utilizing the facility. So, and we can't wait because with swim lessons, you know, without a, a pool that we can access right now, we're going to be doing some things at Iowa State, but, but we're really hampered as to how many swim lessons we can, can provide. So, so we're, we're waiting for it to open as well. Any other questions?
Just the admin suite. Is that something that the public would be able to rent or like reserve, kind of similar to City Hall? Or is that just for city use?
That will, that, that area will just be for city use. We do have, you know, the, the classroom, party rooms, a smaller area if somebody needed something. And we also do have the multipurpose rooms that people could, could rent as well.
I'm, I'm excited.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm excited as well. 87-degree water. Sounds really nice to me. I do want to also thank you for reaching out and making the facility as accessible as you can so that all, all people can enjoy the new.
Yeah.
The new pool center.
Yeah, yeah, very good. Well, thank you so much.
You.
Have a great day.
Thanks. Thanks, Keith.
And we'll see you in a year.
Sounds good. Well, before, but at least, at least, at least for the ribbon, ribbon cutting.
All right, moving on, we have a presentation from the City of Nevada, their urban renewal area application.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So we're here to talk to you about our trail that we are proposing between, really where the overpass on Sixth Street ends that connect, that would connect to our trailhead on Eighth Street. So the, the DOT graciously built the trail over the overpass for us with an agreement that the city would reimburse them close to $1 million for that trail. That trail is now finished, and we are really missing a piece to connect for the rest of our trail system in the community. So the idea would be to have, and have that trail and build through the new Oak Park Estates and connect behind at old Eighth Street where there's that turnaround area, and then connect it for the rest of our trail system. And so the other thing that we're doing right now is we're building a trail on 19th Street. We were able to get a, a really good deal on that, $400,000 for one mile of trail on, on that one. It's a 10-foot, 6-inch-deep asphalt trail with a thick base. And what we want to do is we want, you ask, why are we building all these trails? And we really want to connect the whole entire community with this. And this is kind of one of the last pieces that creates that whole entire connection within the, the community. And then I'll let Tim.
Yeah, so in talking about this piece that we're asking, you know, for funding for, is this is a gap piece now for us.
Pull your mic just a little bit.
Sorry, I'm sorry. So this is a gap piece for us right now is that flyover comes over onto Sixth Street. Between there and Eighth Street is, is that opening. The folks on the south side of Highway 30 that this will connect to have not had access to safe pedestrian trail system for, for a long time. We started our trails back in 1993, right after the floods. And so we've diligently worked to create over five miles of trail in the community during that time. The eight, eight tenths of a mile that the DOT put in, the 1.2 that we're putting in along 19th Street is going to take us over seven miles of trail in our community. We do have a history of working cooperatively with Story County. We did the pave shoulders going south on 11th Street from the city limits, south to Indian, Indian Creek Golf Course out there. Also worked cooperatively with the county years ago to do the pave shoulders along Lincoln Highway. And we've got a strong sense of community support for the trail system. Our community voted in a citizen-driven tax levy for trails in our community a number of years ago. That's still in existence, and that's what we'll use to pay for our portion of this trail. And that's what we're using to pay for all the 19th Street work at this same time. So this really does fill that gap, provides a good safe pedestrian access for those folks on the south side of Highway 30, gets them connected to the greater trail system within our community, which then again connects, you know, to Ames and, and south of, of Nevada with our paved shoulders and, you know, future trail work ties into the Story County REAP plan as well. So we continue to work to make access to everybody and hopeful that, you know, this will be a piece that we'll be able to provide for our community.
Questions you have? I don't have this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation from the City of Slater, their urban renewal area application.
Next up, we have a presentation from the City of Slater, their urban renewal area application.
Well, hello, my name is Jennifer.
You'll want to, sorry, you'll want to push the button so it's green.
Yes. My name is Jennifer Davies. I'm with this, I'm the city administrator with Slater. Our application involves the development of a park along the High Trestle Trail that would have baseball complex, four fields, baseball, softball and soccer fields. It, we want to, we'll have flushable restrooms for trail users. And most importantly, we're we're at a loss for parking in our community with the thousands of bike users on our through our trail system. So there's over two hundred spaces, parking spaces that we hope the trail users find. We welcome them, but we also need someplace for them to be. Residents are, as as residents, find them parked in front of their driveways and such, so. The City of Slater has committed three hundred thousand dollars for this fiscal year towards this project as moving forward. We've also done a REAP grant, submitted a REAP grant for seventy five thousand to help with the trail connection into the park. And this request of a hundred and sixty eight thousand, I believe, to help complete this project.
Have you been approved for the REAP?
They will be doing their final reviews in by October.
Okay.
So we don't know yet.
Thank you. I don't have any other.
I don't have any other questions either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we would have the presentation from the City of Story City, their urban urban renewal application, area application.
I'm Joe Lucas. I'm the Parks and Rec Superintendent for the City of Story City. Our proposed project is going to be a restroom facility that's going to be located in our North Park. Those of you that are not familiar with North Park, that's our main park in the community. It's the home to the antique Store- uh, Story City Antique Carousel. Fairview Lodge, which is a multipurpose rental facility that people use for weddings and receptions and all sorts of events in our Aquatic Center, as well as our main Little League ball field. So the the park is is very busy, used by multiple different age groups and and currently there's not a very accessible restroom. There's one located at Fairview Lodge, but that's at top of a hill. It's hard for anybody with any sort of disability to get up to that restroom. It's hard for parents with strollers. It's not located close to the playgrounds or the Little League field. So the proposed restroom would be right by our newly constructed playground on the north end of the park. There's walking trails throughout the whole park, so it'd be easily accessible for everybody to use. They are going to be ADA compliant restrooms. And they will be right next, like I said, they'll be right next to the playground and and currently there's nothing down in that area. So if we have any big events, we have to bring in portable restrooms. So this would be a a need that we've needed for quite a while.
Thank you. Total project cost is three hundred and fifty three thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars. And we are requesting two hundred and sixty five thousand eighty eight thousand nine hundred and seventy five Parks Capital Project Funds and Fran Kenny Funds or be the matching funds. And that'll be in the Parks Capital Project Fund with Fran Kenny Estate Funds. With that park, I just want to say that the carousel, it's an antique carousel that we've had in the community for years. And anywhere from eighteen to twenty thousand riders a year, all all states, all fifty states and and probably several countries, I think thirty some countries. And so there's a lot of of visitation in the summertime especially. And the recreational equipment in that park is fantastic and it's fairly new. The daycare centers come down there and use it. So you have a lot of young children and the restrooms are really needed for those. And with all the ball games and stuff going on in that park. And like Joe said, there's only one other restroom and that's, you know, up and inclined clear in the west edge of the park system. So I think this would really fill a need in our community and appreciate any help we can get, so.
You mentioned that the restroom would be ADA compliant, which I know new structures need to be. But my question is, have you looked at having like an adult changing table in the restrooms as well?
We have not looked into that at this point. It's still pretty early in the process. We haven't finalized any plans or anything like that. So that's something we could definitely look into.
Sure, as Mr. Abrams spoke of having in theirs, and I know the new arboretum over in Boone County or the remodel, they've included.
Okay.
Something like that in there as well.
Definitely something we would look into, so.
And it'll sit right where the access to it's very good. That'll be hooks right into the trail system that's in that park. And handicapped access is very important everywhere nowadays.
What is the source of funding for the Parks Capital Project Fund?
A part of it would be Fran Kenny Estate Fund. And that was money that was donated specifically for use in the parks years ago.
So that's all private money? Your matching funds are all private.
Kenny money was, yes, she donated that to her recreational and the environment.
Okay, no city money going into it?
Mark, can you come out to your mic?
There is.
So there so there's two potential sources. So we have set aside what's known as a Parks Improvement Fund. That's city money that we've set aside for a number of years. There's that fund. We also have the Fran Kenny Estate Fund, so that's private. What I'm saying is we got a lot, we we have money in both those funds. We just haven't identified which fund that will come from as our matching source. But we have two potential batching sources within the city. The Fran Kenny Estate Fund is controlled by the city as well. Does that answer the question? If you want city money in, I'll take it from the Parks Capital Fund. If you're fine with private donations, it can come from the Fran Kenny Fund. We're open to both.
Oh, so Parks Capital Project Fund is.
Separate.
Separate city fund.
Right, two funding sources, two, we have two funding sources for that project. It can come from either one. I just haven't sat down and go, it's going to come from this one or that one, or it could be a mixture of both.
So are there any other city funds that could be put to this project? You've asked for seventy four percent of the total from us. That's why I'm asking.
Those would be the two sources.
Okay.
I don't know of any other potential funding source that we have other than those two.
Okay, thank you.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have consideration of the September third, twenty twenty four minutes.
I move approval.
Second.
Then moved in seconded, Basil.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Uh, consideration of personnel actions.
Move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second. Then moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Uh, consideration of the nine twelve twenty twenty four claims.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second. Then moved in seconded, Basil.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Consent agenda, anyone pulling anything from consent?
No, and I move approval of the items on consent agenda.
Second. Then moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Now we are down to first of a few public hearing items. We've got consideration of final plan specifications, form of contract and authorization to release bids for the McFarland Shop Replacement Project. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, okay, this project is or this item, I should say, is is seeking your authorization to release a bid package for replacement of a shop building at McFarland Park. We have been taking the last several months to go through a design effort and are at that stage now where we're ready to release it, release it for bid. Couple of things I wanted to chat about with this. One, the Conservation Board has reviewed this and approved last night to bring it forward unanimously. I would then also say that we did have money in the budget for the design services, of course, which we've been doing. And then also we do have some funding available for for the construction. So the money available for construction is not the cost opinion, is lower than the cost opinion for the project. We had this, I guess we made this discovery earlier in the design process. And at that point, made the decision, well, let's go ahead with design and look at if 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 bids bring that to bear and the low bid is still over budget, then we make a decision on is there a solution in sight or do we reject bids on it? So I will say that right now we have an available balance of three hundred fifty one thousand. And we have a cost opinion of five hundred and seventeen thousand. So that leaves one hundred and sixty five thousand unfunded at the moment. So again, if if bids are within reason, then once we receive those bids, the Conservation Board is willing to be a partner in providing some of that gap funding. And then I think the board would, the Conservation Board would make a request to the Board of Supervisors to share in that gap funding. So I think that that would be a something that the Conservation Board would be very amenable to and does have some other funds available to assist with that. So having said that, any questions about funding and then I'll get back into the the project itself?
I don't at this time.
No, okay. So this is replacement of of replacement of our building that that houses. This is our warm structure. We also have a cold structure adjacent to it. The cold structure would not be changed. The warm portion would be removed and and then replaced. We did take extra efforts to, of course, be very cognizant of of funding and need on the project. And in an effort to keep the, be very modest moving forward, we have really scaled the facility down to a point where it's it's a, it is a tenable project for the long term. But if we if we tried to pare it down anymore, we'd probably want to just go back to the drawing board. Because it's, that does not create a long term situ- uh, situation for us. So this building would have office space in it for our staff and would have then heated workspace, work bays for equipment work. So those are the the sailing up pieces of it. And I will say that on the square footage level, this is comparable to what we have at the Hickory Grove Shop. And and so something that we feel we're we're capable with with utilizing for the long term. So any questions about that?
How does the square footage of the warm area compare to the current?
I I'm sorry, say that again.
How does the square footage of what you call in the warm area compare to what you have currently?
It is about three hundred square feet more.
Okay, thank you.
On the heated work bays.
Any other questions?
No.
No. I have toured it and I'm really glad that you're looking at doing some landscaping. So you don't have, if you're building a new building, you don't have water coming, surface water coming into it because that's damaged the one we have. So that's, I think, an essential part of it, so.
Good, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make public comment, I'll ask you to please come forward to make comment up at the front desk here, or if you're online, to please raise your hand. We're calling you on on Zoom. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move approval. Second.
Then moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Haddon's, aye.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike. Next, we'll move on to, we've got consideration of plans and bid specifications for the remodel of the general office space at the Justice Center Facility. Good morning, Joby.
Good morning, Lauren. Got Jeff Harris with me from RMH Architects. So yes, we're looking at the County Attorney Office Remodel Project, a project that's been in the works for about six years at this point. So we've been working about a year now on doing plans for it. We've, it's been through various different ideas. Some were just did some schematical work a few years ago and then got to the point where we acquired some space in the building that the court system wasn't using anymore a few years ago. So that really helped kind of make this project move forward. It's also including kind of giving some secured entrance points for our attorneys and private parking in the back. So they don't have to walk through the public area of the building to get to their offices. Current budget on this project in FY twenty five is nine hundred and forty thousand. The general office remodel, you include a design and engineering is about eight hundred and sixty four thousand. Oh, three years ago, we've had a project in replacing the fire alarm system at that building. It's it's antiquated and it's got some problems. It still fully functions as it should, but we thought this would be a good time, good project to roll that into this project. Part of that nine hundred and forty thousand, seventy thousand of that is for the fire alarm system. As you can see on the cost estimates, the the estimate for the fire alarm piece is two hundred and twenty seven thousand. There's a lot of unknowns, so we kind of went high. The engineer went real high on kind of a worst case scenario. So we chose to set it as an alternate when we put it out for bid to see where it lands. Because it's it's in a category, it's a, it's a need, but it's not a necessity at this point. So if I don't want the fire alarm piece of it to hold up the rest of the project. So we figured we'd have it as an alternate, see where that number lands and then make that decision. Because leading into this, I had three different companies come in and give us an estimate on replacing the fire alarm system. And they ranged on the bottom end at forty seven thousand up to a hundred and twenty thousand on the high end. So I just kind of went in the middle at seventy thousand for budgeting purposes. So I had a little bit of a sticker shock when it, when it was basically two hundred and twenty eight thousand for the fire alarm. A lot of what the unknown is with that, you know, a few years ago, we put a new roof on that facility after hailstorm. And a lot of the conduits that house the fire alarm cabling were installed to clear up on the decking. And when they screwed, we we knew it was a problem when we was putting the roof on. So we tried to do the when we was putting the roof on. So we tried to do the best we could as they screwed the new foam down through. They did hit some of the conduits. So part of this is replacing those that we are aware of. Because we went through and when, as they hit them, facilities management went in and replaced the cabling and, and did that. But we're anticipating there's some that the conduits were pierced, but missed the wires inside the conduit. And we're just not aware that it's a problem. But as they come through to do replacement, they will encounter that. So. Other than that, I'm open for questions.
Any questions?
I would move approval.
Sorry. It's all right. I've done that before too. Did you have any questions before I open? Okay, now is the time for, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone has questions, they can please come forward to our table here, or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. And seeing none, we will close public hearing on this. Now I'll take a motion.
I would move approval.
Second, then moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then next, looks like you're still up here, Joby.
I gotta hang out a little longer.
Yep, yep. Consideration of plans and bid specifications for the range house construction for Story County.
Yes, I think this is one we're all very familiar with. It's been through a lot of different variations. We come down to where we sit with it now and so replacing the the small and met its use building out at the range, shooting range for the sheriff's office. We've scaled back this project from its original concept. It's one that in current budget, we have windmill allocated for this project. As you can see, the most current cost estimate, and this is a, we tried to do is close to an out the door price includes design engineering fees. And we're 1,022,483. So kind of at that point where yes, we are estimates a little over than what we have budgeted, but kind of similar to Mike at the McFarland Park. I think we put it out for bid and see what those numbers come back and then we can have that conversation on whether we move forward with it or reject the bids. Any questions on this one?
I don't have any questions.
No, no questions.
Okay, now is the time for public hearing. If anyone, I'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments, to please come forward, or if you're on Zoom, to please raise your hand and you'll be called on. And seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And I'll take a motion.
I move approval.
Second, then moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know there's been a lot of back and forth and a lot of work.
Yeah.
Yes, on both of the projects. So thanks for your diligence.
All right, you're still on.
Yeah, I'm the next one too.
Okay, yep. Next, we'll move on to what is additional items now? The discussion and consideration of Story County Request for Proposal for Consulting Services for the Development of a Climate Action Plan for Government Operations. Joby and Leanne.
Do we start off?
Sure.
We didn't coordinate very well. The item before the Board of Supervisors is a request for you to consider directing a staff to go forward and seek consulting services for the development of a climate action plan specific for Story County's governmental operations. We are, we have a partnership with the Polk County Resiliency Project that is for everything except for our government operations. The due date of the proposals would be October 8th if it is approved today. The, the RFP does specify that the consultant would be working with both the Go Green team and the Board of Supervisors in developing the plan as we go forward. The plan incorporates goals, strategy identification, and a prioritization process that looks at specifically Story County's governmental operations and the carbon reduction goals that we are identified through the process. And then the expectation is that practical, realistic, and fiscally responsible and cost effective strategies will be identified to accomplish those goals that are, that are defined. As you noted through the RFP, we've included some background information about our buildings and our fleet and our equipment so that potential consultants have an idea of the, the current situations we have. We've also incorporated the G greenhouse gas inventory that we had conducted by you and I a couple of years ago, as well as the plan that the Go Green team has developed. So they have a sense of some of the work that's already been done, not really starting from scratch in this. We do also incorporate a general scope of work that has five primary objectives that we expect the consultants to respond to. They should also present a conceptual plan that addresses the tasks and components that are in the RFP and then the timeline. And then we did also define evaluation criteria. So we are asking that you give staff that you do approve, consider approval, the request for proposals today, and then we would release it. And then again, proposals would be due October 8th. Joby, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you covered it. Just probably one point to add is like Leanne mentioned, we have a list of the main building operations of Story County, but that doesn't mean that those are the only ones that are, would be included in this. We just kind of included that so they had a large idea of the size of our operation, but we intend to take all county-owned properties into consideration, like the greenhouse gas inventory that we did a few years ago included all of our properties. So.
You have questions for us?
No, but I think it's a really thorough RFP.
Yep.
Looks good.
Yeah, that looked good too. Is there a motion?
I move approval of advertising the request for proposals.
Second, then moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, next we have departmental reports, the Conservation Quarterly Report.
Good morning. Well, thank you again.
Good morning, Mike.
Shift focuses here a little bit. It's been some time, I believe. Quarterly report's a little generous. I think it's been some time since I've been here. So I do apologize for that. Number of things, you all have the written report, but a number of things, I'm just gonna, I'm not going to go down through it item by item, but kind of touch on some things as we go and then entertain any questions you may have. The first couple of things here on the, on the list are, are projects that, that as you know, we've been working on throughout the summer and are not wrapped up yet, but, but nearing. So first one is the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail. As you know, that project is underway and that consists of two contracts. So the first contract is taking, is doing the paving from Slater over to S14. That contract was the first one to mobilize and also will be the first one to complete. I'm sure the paving itself is complete, but the site work is not. So, so that one's moving forward. The second one is paving as well. And that one is from S14 over to Collins. And so obviously a longer distance and it's going to take some more time, but, but that is underway. And so we are seeing nice progress on both of those. The second project is the Hickory Grove wastewater line. Replace the lagoon system there, a long awaited project. And so we are nearing completion on that as well, but not quite there. There's some loose ends that need to be tied up, pressure testing that needs to be done, et cetera. So the infrastructure is all in place. It's just a matter of doing final connections and, and testing. So, so those two projects are nearing completion. I'm gonna skip down one. The next one that's underway this summer as well is wetland construction at Prairie Valley Preserve, AKA Dotson Property. And I think you all are familiar with this project as well and its relationship with the Drainage District work. And so the, the wetland project is is nearing completion as well. I think all of the groundwork is done, all the earthwork for it is, is done and they are awaiting final connections with the contractor that has the Drainage District project. So that's moving forward nicely. Earlier this summer, had some communication with many of the landowners there in that subdivision and had, had a conversation with them one evening and they were so excited about what's taking place there. They, they love being adjacent to a natural area, adjacent to a park. And they're very looking for, very much looking forward to completion of that and the trail system that will be there as well. So very excited group of landowners there. And, and I think that that project really is a, really is a shining star for, for, for the county. Then I'll back, back up that one to water quality. I think you're, you're all are very familiar with the Edge of Field project that, that we've been working on. We're a few years into it now and have only completed the on the ground, the work on the year one projects. Each year has a successive batch of projects moving forward for implementation. And we're thankful for the City of Ames, who is the fiscal agent on this project and, and they're, they're doing a lion's share of, of the work as far as the, the backside work, the administrative work, the contracting work, et cetera. We're at the front end with working, finding landowners and, and willing landowners that, that want to partake in the project and, and working with our, our other funding project, partner, which is IDALs. And so it's moving along, but it's moving along very slowly, quite frankly, the process. And a lot of that is, is the design work that's necessary on these saturated buffers and bioreactors. The design work is really taking a lot of time. And, and so we wish that that would speed up. The city did just, City of Ames did just rebid the year two batch because the cost came in too high. And so there was a few factors involved with that. They got one bid and so they're gonna go back and tweak a few things, extend the deadline, and then they're hoping that they can get a couple more bids and get more favorable, more favorable bid system, bid tabs. So at any rate, that is still moving forward. One of the things that we're really excited about with water quality project is that Hawk Company came onboard as a sponsor and they have been sponsoring for some time the water quality testing strips that we use. And so they've been providing those, they're their testing strips and, and they've been donating those and we really appreciate that. They also came online as more, as a larger sponsor and have now contributed contributed funds to the project. So very excited about that. They are really excited about the project and, and excited to be able to do more community engagement. So tremendous cooperation there that's, that's taking shape. We also were part of a, and we haven't heard, haven't got the results back on it yet, but we're part of a, a larger or a regional grant application for a federal grant that would make funding available for stream bank stabilization and wetland creation. So those two things, like you said, it was a larger project. It was a 20-county project. Essentially, it's all the counties in the Des Moines lobe. And, and so it's being, it is being managed by Polk County and by the Great Outdoors Foundation on behalf of all of those counties. And so if that grant is received, we'll be one of the, we'll be probably in the year one batch on moving forward with that. If we have all of our projects lined up and, and in the queue. So looking forward to that as well. The trails plan, you're familiar that we have been working on this for the last several months now and Snyder and Associates is the firm that we contracted with to develop the plan. We went through a series of vetting, vetting process with the public to get public sentiment on, on what's important. You know, what's important to the public for trail networks, trail systems. You heard from some of the cities here this morning, particularly you heard from Nevada and their desires. And, and so we had a, a good conversation. We had, one of our public meetings was at the New Field House here. Tremendous facility and I want to thank the city for hosting that meeting for us and had a good turnout. Most of our turnout as far as public comment was online. I think we had nearly 150 or plus online comments submitted. And so that was phenomenal. So all that's being wrapped up right now and formulated into a plan. Once we receive the draft plan, then we'll go through another public round of, of opinion, public vetting. And so then we'll take that and make any adjustments necessary before we bring forward a final plan for consideration. Any questions on the trail plan? Another project you've heard about for quite some time is the Deppy Family Wildlife Area. That's the area adjacent to McFarland Park. You know, we went through the fundraising effort for acquisition and were able to find grant funds and private funds to, to acquire that. So that has been done. Then we submitted another grant application, a federal grant for development. We did receive that grant and so we have a tentative award on that grant, which covers half of the cost to do that development work. So we're, we're pleased with that. It was 160, 160-plus thousand dollars on that grant. So so that was fabulous news. And so we'll, we'll continue to move forward and put pieces of the puzzle together to bring that forward. Another thing that you, you may know, but we we were able to, we've been working for a little bit of time now with Matt Boyk to do a kind of a GIS-based app for people to find our park facilities, to find the trails, and that has launched. And so it's a, it's an incredible, probably at this stage, it might be considered old technology, but you could download on your device web-based or web-hosted GIS program that will be able to tell people exactly where they are if they're out in the parks. You'll be able to geolocate and see where you are in relation to the trails or the other facilities that are offered in the parks. So tremendous asset for the, for particularly those that maybe aren't familiar with areas or going out into areas for the first time. We don't want people to get lost. And so if they have that ability on their phone or their device, they can, which most people do these days, they can, can very easily determine where they are. So that's a nice thing to be able to offer. On the edge.
Did you, did you say the app is complete and?
It is complete.
And so how do people, is it, I'm sure posted on signage around?
It's posted on, on parking areas and trailheads. I think we have it on our website too, a link to it on the website.
That's awesome.
So yeah, it's nice to be able to have. We made a QR, QR code that, that links right to it.
Great.
So. On the educational front, you'll see some of these statistics and these are, these are annual statistics for, as you see there, FY23. So they are, you know, in, in essence, the, the, the outreach, if you will, has stayed fairly consistent with our EE program. It's changed dramatically since COVID, a number of different ways. We're just now bringing back some of our overnights, some of our extended. Um, we're just now bringing back some of our overnights, uh, some of our extended, uh, offerings. And so we did the first one this year since COVID and it went very well. Um, but since then, we've had a, a number of, uh, turnovers in staff and, and staff learning new programs and getting them up to speed. And so, um, it's nice to be able to now, I, I feel like we're, we're finally back in tune with, with offering our full spectrum, um, or we will be next year, uh, with offering our full spectrum of programs. So anywhere from the short engagements to the longer multi-session engagements. Any other, any questions on our educational programming? Okay.
Are you sure that's FY twenty-three or is it twenty-four?
Well, you know, I had that thought run through my mind when you said, when I said that, I think it might be twenty-four.
Cause I'm looking at, I'm looking at Jerry's, uh, report from last night and it was twenty twenty-four environmental.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think that's not year old, I think that's-
I think it's, I think you're right, I think it is twenty-four.
Okay. Thanks.
Another thing I want to mention is, you know, a number of years ago, we started a, uh, kind of a discount program for, for those that want to use the services that we offer for fees. This, um, but have it at a discounted rate. So we have, uh, sponsorship for that program. We call it Nature Connect. We've, we've had sponsorship for it, but we haven't had, we've had very little uptake or very little usage over the years. We tied it with MICA, um, when we developed the program. And so we untied it now with the idea that, uh, it's on an honor system right now. Uh, so if someone wants to, um, uh, go camping or go to a program or, and, you know, they just don't have the funds, they feel necessary to, to be able to do it. Um, they can contact us and we can then, um, use those sponsorship dollars to, to, um, uh, to get the fees paid for them. So it is available and now it's available, like I said, on an, on an honor system. And so we'll see how that goes. Um, but I think tying it to MICA, um, was a little problematic now in hindsight. Uh, and so we'll see if we can get some broader uptake, um, with it, um, on this new system. And so we'll see how that goes, but we'll be watching that. As far as natural resource management, um, you'll see some system statistics here again. I'm not going to go through all of those. I'm gonna call out that second bullet here and that is that, um, a number of years ago, you know, we started doing an inventory and we're the only, as far as I know, we're the only county that has done this, an inventory of natural resources in the, in the county. Uh, kind of inventory of our sensitive environmental resources. And that was a multi-year process and we're complete now. And so as a result, we have, uh, we have the inventory that identifies here are the most sensitive areas. We also have a, um, if you will, a cadre of landowners that own those sensitive areas that are very interested in what they can do to improve those. And so we've, we've done some surveys with those landowners, really trying to determine uh, what they desire and how we could, if, if that's anything, we could help facilitate or meet those needs. Um, so more education is really what they want, um, and they want to, um, um, uh, meet each other, uh, they want to come together and see if there's some kind of, you know, synergies moving forward. And so, um, we're actually hosting the first, um, field day for that project, uh, October first at one of their areas, at one of their, um, properties. Uh, and so I don't, I, I think we've got twenty some odd people. I think Linda, you might be on the list for that, if I remember right. Are you going to that?
I think so.
Um, I think we've got twenty some odd people registered for that, so it's fabulous. Uh, and so, um, just to start and, and trying to, um, help landowners recognize what they have and then help give them the knowledge and, and the, shoot them in the direction that maybe they need to go to manage that the way they, they want to manage it. So, uh, so that's a nice offering. Also you'll see this, you've, you may have noted this summer that we've got more, um, a few more partnerships with our ag producers on, on different properties. Uh, we've done a, a fair amount of grazing and then we've also done some row crop this year on some of our areas for strategic needs. Um, and, uh, so we're, we're happy about that. Nevada FFA is, is one of the ones that we've partnered with. They're doing a small row crop area at Hickory Grove Park that was our spoils from the lake. So things that we, uh, the, the material we dredged out of the lake, we tried planting it back to permanent, uh, vegetation. And it just, it, it just didn't take it needed, it was so weedy, it needed more management. And, uh, so farming it is a wonderful solution. It gives the FFA, uh, folks some, some, uh, area to, to farm and, and at the same time meets our needs. So that'll happen for a couple of years. Another one is the Deppi Family Wildlife Area. It's about ninety acres of tillable there that's being farmed by a local, um, producer. And, uh, the plan is to farm that for two years and then, uh, then do the prairie planting after that. So all of those efforts are going well. We've had some cattle grazing and, and as usual, some goat, some goat grazing as well in some of our different areas to really have kind of a targeted approach to some of our, uh, invasive species control.
So how does that grant you got for Deppi fit in with row cropping there for two years?
I, I'm sorry, what?
How does that grant you received for Deppi fit in with row cropping there for two years?
Yeah, so the, the, there's no problem, uh, no problem at all. Um, the last time we got this grant, it took two years, uh, to get the funding. And so it, that's gonna take some time, uh, and, um, so yeah, there's no, no conflict there at all.
Okay, thank you.
So.
And what is being farmed?
At Deppi.
Yeah, what, uh, what, what are they planting? And where, where does that, where does that go? The, the produce, whatever is farmed.
So the, um, the farmer is, uh, has soybeans out, if that's your question?
Yeah, that was my-
Okay, okay. No, they've, they've got soybeans, they did a no-till, um, uh, no-till application. And, um, it, it's looking good, they're happy with it. Uh, and so, yeah, we expect that it will be, um, soybeans again next year. And then after that, we'll do the, uh, the restoration. So that, that answer your question?
Yeah, partially. So, uh, is there, um, are they renting the, the land?
Yes, it's a cash rent.
Okay, okay, that, yeah, okay, great.
That, that does take into account the added, um, if you will, the added expenses that go along with farming at the way that we wanted to farm it. Um, so i.e., you know, row crop and, and, uh, use of, uh, certain chemicals, or I should say, not, not using certain chemicals, um, that kind of thing. So.
Right.
Yeah, cover crops are included in it, so they'll use cover crop on it. So. All right, any other questions?
Um, I just have a couple. Um, are you done with the report?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, you said you met with the landowners in Prairie Valley. Did you have an opportunity there to talk about the landowner responsibilities that the developer agreed to? With the HOA, not using certain sprays, not doing native plant or non-native plants?
Right, we touched on that. Um, most of the time was spent on the developments on the, on the, uh, county property. We did touch on that, the HOA has not been established yet. Uh, and so as that group is established, then we'll, we'll, uh, we'll be very engaged with that group, um, moving forward.
Yeah.
We did touch on the, on the chemical use, the, the prohibition of phosphorus in fertilizers, et cetera. Um, but we didn't get, didn't really get very detailed on it.
Would it make sense for us to make, to put together a brochure or some written information to give homeowners as they go into that area? Cause I'm just afraid that an HOA isn't going to be done for a while and it just is going to fall between the cracks. And why did we do all that work for water quality if people are doing things I shouldn't be doing? So I would request that you-
Yeah.
Do some informational brochures and make sure to get them to everybody who becomes a homeowner in that, in that subdivision.
We saw that exact need, Linda, and we did create one. Um, and so we do have that now and we have distributed those to, um, um, to the developer to put in their prospective, uh, home, prospective buyer packages. And so those are in there.
It might be good to have like an annual meeting with the homeowners there to remind them of it, cause that's something that could get-
Right.
Agreed.
Really easily.
Agreed. And we also received a grant for that project that's going to help with that project and the prairie re-establishment there. Um, it's kind of a, a pilot grant, if you will, with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and, but I keep, and Iowa State. A key part of that is, um, uh, landowner, um, corroboration. And so engagement is a big part of that. And so built into that grant is regular contacts with, uh, in that example, with the HOA.
I think that's. So could you send me that brochure? I have not seen it.
Yeah.
Didn't know about its existence, I'm glad that you've done that.
Yep.
Um, the other, I had a couple of other things. The water quality, the edge of field practices. You know, I know that they take a lot of time, they're not cheap and it's sometimes hard to find sites. Um, I've been talking with Sarah a little bit about whether we could switch some emphasis to infield practices and particularly cover crops. Been trying to get some ideas of why we don't have more of an uptake on cover crops. And a lot of it is just the labor. Became aware recently at a statewide WMA meeting that John Swanson in Polk County, that they, they bought a cover crop cedar. And I think that's a pretty hefty device. I don't think our prairie cedar does anything like, like that.
No.
That's cause Sarah said, don't we have a cedar? And I said, I don't think it'll work for that. But I, I, just to let you know, I, I really think we need to be working more on infield practices because they are less expensive and they mean less inputs getting into the drainage tiles and into the cree- creeks and streams as opposed to letting, having people put all these inputs on bare ground. And then doing expensive edge of field installations to remove it.
Right.
Let's kind of get, and we've talked about this before.
Right.
Whole farm practices, infield practices are much better than edge of field.
Agreed.
And I know Idols has the money for edge of field, but if we could find either, find a way to use Polk County cedar, do a program or get one of our own. I think we could, uh, get by one of the big barriers of doing cover crops, which is one more time over the field.
Right, I agree, one hundred percent. I think that, you know, we know that there's, we're gonna hit a point in time where, you know, we're, we're gonna have saturated all the interest in edge of field. Um, hopefully that interest continues to grow, but we're, we're gonna saturate it.
And you take that twenty installations times thirty thousand to put in an installation divided by six hundred acres, you get twenty-five hundred dollars to treat an acre.
Right, right.
We can do better than that.
So, yeah, I, I agree. And I think that from a philosophical standpoint, infield is, is, um, is something we need to be doing. The money right now has been on edge of field and there hasn't been infield money, uh, to speak of. Now NRCS does have some, Idols does have cover crop, you know, co- cost share, et cetera. But, um, you're right, that, that getting it down has been an impediment.
I think Polk County might have used Idols' money to get that cedar.
Right, right.
So if it can't be transported here, maybe we could do the same thing. I know that then we'd have to set up a program, but I think it could be done pretty easily.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
The other thing I, I noticed is when, um, folks from Nevada were here earlier. I think Jordan said that the new trail that they were putting in on nineteenth, it was gonna cost four hundred thousand for a mile. Is that what you're seeing with the heart and with the trails that you're doing, that kind of, that kind of, um?
I'd have to go back, I'd have to go back and crunch some numbers, quite frankly.
Yeah, I know I've been saying three hundred to five hundred when people ask me, cause that's-
I think there's such a wide range. I mean, most of the work that we're doing is on an old railroad bed, which-
It's cheaper.
Is a little bit, a, 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 a little bit more cost effective. Really the money comes in where, the majority of the money comes in where you have to do these add-ons. Like you have to cross a stream or you need, you know, culverts here, there, or, you know, you, you've got some erosion problems or maybe, maybe the route goes through, uh, uh, area that's harder to, harder to develop. Um, some of those are the, what's really starts to add the cost up. But I, I think that's probably in the ballpark. A number of years ago, the ballpark used to be four hundred thousand. I mean, it used to be right at four hundred thousand for a new trail. Uh, I think we've seen that go north a little bit from there, but, um, I'd have to go back and see what, what our rate is.
I'm just always interested in that, cause people say, oh, let's do a bike trail. And it's like, that's an easy thing to do, right? And I think people need to realize that, yeah, bike trails benefit a whole lot of people. But you have to really plan it carefully and budget it out, cause it is not, it is not inexpensive at all.
Right, right.
Mike, I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I do have a question for you. You referenced, uh, with Deppi that you received, I think, a federal grant that helps cover-
Correct.
Half of what you're looking at.
Yep.
I know we've talked about this before in the past, but it just seemed to me that Deppi seemed like the good location to put potentially the new center. And could you tell me why we're not? Again, I know you've told me in the past, but that is just-
Yeah.
It's like it's an under, a non-developed area that would make more sense.
Yeah, yeah. I think the, the, I think it was really an effort to keep the, kind of to keep the development footprint, i.e. the building footprint in, in one location there at McFarland, rather than to expand it. It was a point of discussion when we were doing the, um, the Deppi master plan. Um, but in the, in the, in the end, through that review and consideration, the master plan did not include buildings other than a trailhead facility, picnic shelter, et cetera. Um, but it was considered in that process and, um, and, and in the end was, was opted to not be included and to really keep that, that building footprint there right at, uh, right at, uh, where the current building is.
Well, I know that that's way down the road in terms of your, your plan. So I, maybe that's something we can chat about again, cause I've had people, you know, I, somebody just the other day talk about the wonderful prairie at McFarland.
Oh, yeah.
And how beautiful that was. And this was in conjunction with talking about the Conservation Bond.
Uh, you know, here's the-
And, and, and I said to them, oh, I'm glad you like it. That's where they're talking about putting the new building and-
Right.
I saw faces just fall.
You know, and it's, it, and I, I can understand that. We knew that, um, when we were in that, that, uh, having those discussions. Uh, you know, that area at McFarland used to be tilled. Uh, that used to be farmland and we reconstructed-
When did they seed it?
But we, we reconstructed a prairie there.
When?
Um, I, I, I couldn't tell you exactly.
Probably at least twenty years ago, right?
Well, more than twenty.
More than twenty.
And they, I guess, and, and that's a fairly small footprint. Whereas you, if we look at, now we have the opportunity across the road to develop an, uh, uh, you know, ninety, well, it's ninety acres of tillable. Now we have the opportunity to look at the long range and say, hey, we're gonna put that much prairie right there. Um, we don't have a lot of opportunities to show off the lake and to develop something in concert with the lake. Uh, so that's why that decision was made. Uh, and so, um, yeah, there's some give and takes, some pros and some cons all the way around on that. Um, but in the end, I think the, the vision was then to create a, create a larger contiguous, um, prairie across the road and, and sacrifice, if you will. Um, a few acres, uh, there at the existing site, so. But understood, um, at one point that, at one point they, uh, they were both farmed. So we, we can do prairie, we can, we can put prairie back.
But it takes a while, you don't have it, I mean, it takes several years to have it, get it. But it takes a while. You don't have it. I mean, it takes several years to have it, get a decent prairie. You know that.
It can, you're right. It can take some time. Yep, yep.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Mike.
Good. Thank you.
Time this morning. And then we have Joby back up for facilities quarterly report.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Yeah, well, uh, I won't go through the whole thing. I just got some high points I want to include that's um, either been finalized or just some further details. You can tell our numbers are pretty average, what we normally see in a quarter for our work orders. Um, in the general information section, um, the ADA audit. That is an ADA audit of all the restrooms in our public buildings. Um, it is near completion. I think the last building they were uh, looking at was the McFarland Park Restrooms and then but consultant and I will, will bring that final report in front of the board. We'll just kind of go through everything that they found and solutions for it and things to take into consideration and what has changed with the ADA regulations. So we're looking forward to coming up and talking about that. Um, figured I'd give you some information on what an arc flash study is. Um, it's basically all of your electrical panels. Um, the NFPA is uh, they started this about ten years ago to where the arc flash hazard in electrical panel, basically the odds of a person, if they were working in that panel live and something were to happen, the potential for um, uh, flash hazard detrimental to the employee working on it. And then there's special shoot suits you have to wear depending on what that arc flash rating is. But basically it's every five years, you have to update that. This was an update. It's been done in all of our facilities before. Basically, it's a sticker that goes on the panel and then there's a report that comes with it, how they determined the hazard of it. And it tells you what PPE you have to wear if you're going to work in that panel live. So. And it is at this point fully complete. All stickers are applied. I have all the reports in hand, so.
And all the PPE you need.
Yep, yep. And I mean, our practice is, is we generally don't work in a live panel. We have the means to shut ninety-five percent of our electrical panels, we can shut off, you know, so if we have to do something, just do it after hours. But currently the only one on our staff that is licensed to do work if you have to wear an arc flash suit is myself. And I do have an arc flash suit. So if push comes to shove, I put it on and we do it. But we also weigh in the risk and a lot of times if we need to do live work, we contract it. A lot of that's got to do with insurance purposes, but sometimes in emergency, I have worn it, so. So that's what it is in a nutshell. I figured that you're probably looking at it like, I don't know what that is. So. Figured out to explain. We spent a lot of time this summer working out in the debris site. It's um, probably ninety percent clear of any debris received. There's a small load of uh, recyclable metal that we need to take to Bell Salvage. And then later this fall, we hope to burn the brush that's out there. Just waiting for the surrounding crops to be out of the field in wetter weather before we do that. So worst case, we burn it in the spring. So other than that, all the construction debris has been hauled off. That went well. We hauled about we can take, we have two dump trailers. We can get a little over two tons in each trailer. I think we took forty loads of C and D off that site. So it was, it got used after the tornado. So. And I know that the people we encountered were very appreciative that it was available for their use.
Do you have any idea how many people used it? Not how many?
We could get that information because we, we tracked every load that came in by address. So
Okay.
We could, I could find out how many different individuals. I want to say I don't even want to give a number.
Okay.
Leanne told me at one point, but I, I don't want to.
I can ask her.
Yep.
Yeah, I, so you're saying people were appreciative. You feel like it wasn't just a few folks. A lot of folks used it.
Yeah, it was kind of sporadic, you know. When we switched to the buy appointment, that worked very well.
Mm-hmm.
And we were able to accommodate most everything same day. Just, yeah, and there, we had days it was busy. We were out there all day long receiving stuff. And then it would just kind of go in spurts. And then we had, you know, some late loads come in because we had one residence that took them a while to get an answer from their insurance company on what kind of reimbursement they had have. And so once they got that, then they started bringing it to us. So. Yeah, all in all, I thought it went well. We learned a lot of stuff, so.
You did.
Better prepared for next time. So.
Yeah.
All right, um, we are real close to being full staffed. We had second shift maintenance tech, Jacob, he started last week and that's going well. We did get the um, pre-employment physical results for the first shift maintenance tech. They are tentatively looking to start next week. The action form will be on Tuesday's agenda. So that just leaves us with one vacant second shift maintenance tech position that um, we've had some good candidates. We're interviewing some this afternoon. So hopefully be full staff before the end of the month. Be nice. Administration building, um, one of the big ones, parking lot lights. They're all updated to LED. I don't know if you've noticed or not, but yeah. So that was a big one. We ended up um, just replacing the heads and reusing the existing poles. If we could reuse the existing poles, that was around a sixteen thousand dollar cost savings. And then we also saved an additional, just a hair over five thousand dollars. And there's an adapter that goes on the, the light head to adapt it to the existing pole. The two maintenance techs on staff that made those adapters in-house for about eight hundred dollars. And the cost to purchase those adapters was fifty-eight hundred. So.
Wow.
Saved five thousand dollars by making those in-house. So yeah, that was Wade Ames and uh, Jordan App.
Wow.
They're pretty good aluminum welders. So that was.
Well, good job, guys.
Yeah. And then um, kind of give a little information on our fire drill we had.
That was going to be my question for yesterday.
Last week. It was not a fire. There was that stair tower unit right over there that we've been working on, putting a new compressor in the heat pump that sits up above the ceiling. Well, after the new compressor was put in on that day, one of the refrigerant, refrigerant lines burst and they had all the ceiling tile out. And it was in cooling mode when it happened. So it was a fog of refrigerant that was in the stair tower and set the fire alarm on. So. But Nevada Fire did a very thorough walk of the entire facility with um, infrared heat guns and made sure there was no hot spots and confirmed that there was no hazard in the building. So. So.
And has that then been fixed?
They're working on it right now. Yep. It, it come down to, it was a vibration in the unit. We got proper vibration dampener. So it knock on wood, shouldn't happen again. It was one of those weird.
Fluke, fluky things that happen.
Yeah, it's just a crazy thing that I've never encountered before. So. And then uh, we've been working on, you know, we have uh, ordered a contract to replace the generator at this facility. We've been working with, been some delays with uh, getting some final approvals with Alliant Energy on what we could do for a transfer switch outside. We got that all settled. Equipment was ordered a few months ago. The generator itself is scheduled to be delivered this month. I have not heard that it showed up. And then um, outside, we're going to put the switch gear that um, connects the generator to the building and isolates the power sources. That's due to be delivered in November. And then part of that is uh, basically it's a termination cabinet. So that they can have the, the meter socket and everything outside. That's scheduled to be delivered in December. When they go to install the transfer switch and termination cabinet outside, the building will be without power for four days.
Oh.
Um, critical infrastructure would be powered by the existing generator, but being closed for four, you know, having power to the free force of the building would deem that a lot of it wouldn't be able to be used. So we will talk about this more when I have a better timeline of the install. So I asked them about what the cost would be if we could at least have two of those days over a weekend. So it's fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars additional labor costs if we did two of those weekends. But regardless, you know, so we'd have to weigh which way is the better way to do it. But we're still looking at at least two days, the building would not be able to be
Could people work remotely? Can IT be?
Yeah, everything in IT, because the current generator runs the server room, all the critical infrastructure. So yes, remote work would be an option. Granted, not everybody can.
Not everybody can, but remember the beginning of COVID when we were not, we didn't even have, we had most of our employees at home. We managed for
Right.
Quite a while. So knowing ahead of time, we could certainly manage for two days, I would think.
Yep, and prior to bringing this back to the board to kind of discuss it and get more direction, I just kind of wanted to plant the seed now. I plan to discuss with each individual office in the building to go over how that would affect their operation and make sure we're not missing something before we commit to.
Let's remember, it's just this building. It's not the justice center, not HSC, not conservation, not secondary roads, not animal shelter. It would just be the offices in this building. I think it's
And realistically, given the, the timeline for the equipment showing up, obviously winter time isn't the time that we're going to sit the building without heat for
Right.
For four days.
You're probably not going to do it on election day to
No.
Me losing here.
That's all part of making sure that we think of everything. So it's going to be spring sometime. But I want to have a tighter date of making sure the equipment's here before we, we go into that. But I just wanted to kind of bring it up while I was here.
Thank you.
It's good to think about.
Yeah.
Okay, um, pretty standard fare. We you know, you look at some of the buildings and it doesn't look like we've done much, but we have a lot of large projects we've been working on. A lot of, you know, a lot of camera stuff, a lot of keyless entry, you know, general repair. We're at the time of year where we're starting to get all of our equipment ready for wintertime. So we're busy. Um, what are they want to bring up? Out at McFarland Park, we were able to kind of preemptively preparing for the potential of the McFarland shop project moving forward. That's currently where they charge their fleet EV and um, we were able to get a temporary outlet for them to charge that fleet EV at McFarland. It's not a, I would, it's not a permanent solution. We do have a project budgeted at McFarland to put in a um, pay-to-use um, EV charging station with the ability for fleet vehicles to use that. I reached out to the city of Ames because, you know, we all know they've recently put in a lot of charging stations and uh, talked with Joel Zuck. He's their uh, energy services coordinator. And he got me in contact with some folks. Because that's how all of the charging stations they put in work is people from the public can use it with a debit card, credit card. And then each vehicle, fleet vehicle is assigned a key fob that they can scan on that charging station and use it to charge their fleet vehicles. So that was something that Mike and I talked about that we wanted the ability to do. So it is doable. Now it's just uh,
Getting it done.
Getting it done. So I got good information. Joel was great help, getting me pointed in the right direction. So that's a good one to be a nice, and it'll be a nice one to kind of be our test station too, to give us options for the future. So.
Mm-hmm.
The net, that is the high points I wanted to ta- touch base on. I'm open to any questions you might have.
Any questions? You already answered my one question.
All right.
I don't have any. I don't think we do. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well.
Yes.
Hey, we have no other reports. Any upcoming agenda items?
I will have a request on uh, next week's agenda for the, for the county to provide a cash grant, match grant for the grant for the digital equity grant that Mepa is working on. Pardon me. So I will get that in yet this week.
Okay. No, okay, I don't either. Now it's the time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment, please come forward to the table. I see nobody on Zoom. So seeing that, we'll close public comment. Number two, we'll move on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements. Supervisor Merkin, do you want to start us out?
Yeah, I seem to have an AEDC exec meeting in fifteen minutes. I think I'll be a little late to that. Um, we have a staff meeting, board supervisor staff tomorrow. I also have a meeting in the afternoon at the Ames Public Library to talk about the digital equity grant. Um, Thursday, we're going to be at sixty forward um, for an event there. And Friday we have Burger Fest and then I'm going to have to leave that early because I'm going to a field day up in Northern Story County. And Monday, got a Mepa meeting. And I think we have some kind of a site visit with Darren on Monday. And I also have another meeting on Monday regarding the Mepa grant, the digital equity grant. Tuesday I will be out all day, so I won't be here at the meeting.
And Supervisor Basil?
Yeah, um, I have, let me get back to my, so staff meeting tomorrow and then I have a NACO Rural Action Caucus meeting um, in the afternoon, sixty forward tour uh, tomorrow. And then tomorrow evening, we have asset joint funders meeting. Um, Friday, we do.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Food Fest on Friday and I'll be slinging burgers uh, at that. Really looking forward to that. Um, and then I, I, it'll be fun. Um, and then the uh, site visit with Darren looks, on my calendar, it shows it starts at seven thirty, just FYI, in the morning.
I have on mine too.
Thank you.
Yep, that's what I've got. And then Tuesday morning, I've got a, um, a canvas of the September tenth special election.
Yeah.
Before our meeting. That's it.
Yep. So I have um, this afternoon, I have a meeting up in Roland. And then I have an ARC board meeting tonight. Um, tomorrow I have the staff board meeting and then I also have a NACO Economic Development and Workforce monthly meeting. Uh, Thursday I have the sixty forward tour. I'm also going on a, a presentation with Zach from our Veterans Affairs. And then asset joint funders. Um, I too will be slinging burgers and stuff on Friday. And then have a de-cap meeting Monday. Uh, the visit with Darren. Um, we're back in time. I have a lunch meeting and then Tuesday I'll be here for our um, canvases and board supervisors. I also have the CICS supervisor meeting and that night, Tuesday night, the seventeen, is the um, mental health and disability candidates forum. So if folks are interested in attending that, that's taking place as well. Uh, if there is nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second, been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's eye. We are adjourned.